Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Oh, I can't, you can do better than that. Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, it's so exciting out here. We love being in the east. We've been in the west, been in the north, been in the south. It's not often that we get to the east. Maybe we ought to come out here more and say good morning. But I'm Sheila Smoot. I'll be your host today along with Joseph Bryant. Sheila Smoot with the Sheila Smoot Show on CBS 42 on at 4:30 a.m. I own that show. It's just a good feeling. I'm also in Tuscaloosa and around the state and been around for awhile. Also, I want to take a good opportunity to say that I will be joined this morning by Joseph Bryant of AL.com. Also, a former everything, but just a great journalist. So, we have a group of great journalists in the room and I'll proceed to introduce everybody else. But at this point in time, we're going to proceed and we are so excited to be in this great church and with this great leader. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Bishop Lowe of God in Light Baptist Church.
Well, this God in Light Church, not, we're not Baptist.
Yeah, not Baptist. This is God in Light Church by Paul.
But we want...
Fact check.
Fact check. There we go. And what we want to do is want to welcome everyone here and welcome everyone that's on the online audience also. And it's vitally important that we as the people learn to come together and hold accountable those who we put in office to rule us.
That's right.
This country was set up on the principle that we, the people, and we, the people, need to come together as we're doing here today, as you're doing online. And I want to encourage everyone to engage with what's happening in the political process. Our nation, our country, our city, our school boards are all going to be dependent upon the people who we put in charge.
That's right.
If it doesn't work right, it's our fault. It's not theirs because we put them there. So, it's vitally important that we have more gatherings like this to come together to evaluate these people who we want to rule over us. So, when you leave here, go tell somebody about what you've learned because one of the worst things we can have is ignorant voters who just vote for dummies. One thing I'm going to say, might offend some of these political leaders we have, but all it takes to be a political leader is to be a good con person. Because if you can con some of the people, you can get in position and you can put yourself forward and only look out for you. But we, the people, have a responsibility to keep the con men and women from getting in office. But if we don't keep them in check, then they're going to take over and rule over us. Well, that's biblical stuff I could show you. But one of the most important things is that we want to elect people that are going to be God, like people that are going to have a moral compass, that they're going to be guided not by what they feel, but by a higher authority. And that's the way the people can be safe. So, therefore, as we go forward, I'm going to bring in the presence of Almighty God because we're in a church. And these guys up here and those that are going to come up and speak need to always remember they're accountable to God. And one day, they're going to stand before Almighty God and give an account, just like pastors. And pastors should be engaged in it. So, right now, invoke his presence. Father, in the name of Jesus, we do thank you for this gathering that's here. And Lord, we ask that you give us insight. Give us a spirit of discernment that when we listen to these men and women that desire to rule over us, that we might hear what the intent of their heart is, if it's for the people or if it's for themselves. Give us that discernment. And Lord, give us wisdom to know what to ask, to know what to see, so that we might make our community a better community. Lord, if people rule over us and they rule and they're wicked and they're ruling, the people are going to suffer. But if we can choose righteous men and women, then we know by choosing righteous men and women, your word has said the people will rejoice. So, we come together in this moment in order to evaluate critically and analyze these men and women who will stand before us. Give us that discernment. Give us that insight. And bless those that are gathered here so that they'll have that wisdom and understanding to go forward and share what they've heard and help others know how to vote intelligently. It's in the name of Jesus that we thank you for being here and we give you all the glory. Amen. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Bishop Lowe. We really appreciate those kind words of wisdom and those direct words. So, there is no fear in here. At this time, I'd like to bring to the podium William Muhammad. You don't want to go over the agenda?
Not with the...
Not right now?
No.
Okay, now with the school board, the city council. We're going to move on. Good morning, candidates. How are you?
Good morning.
Welcome to the community forum. It is sponsored by the Gatekeepers Association of Black Contractors, the Fraternal Order of Police, and also the Committee to Save Jefferson County. So, those are your sponsors today and we are excited that you are here. At this time, let me call the roll. And you may say president or here. For school board candidates, we're going to start out with the questioning with the school board candidates. Derek Phillips, incumbent.
Here.
Rodney Huntley.
Here.
Patricia Reesner, Rezer. Patricia Reeser, not here. And Brother Walter Yurani, am I saying that right?
You pretty much on it, man.
Yes, sir.
I'm here.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up with the first rules of engagement here. These are the rules for the forum flow. You will have about 30 seconds to introduce yourself, two minutes to answer per question allowed. A 30-second warning to the best of our ability will be given to you to alert you of the time remaining, which means you need to start your wrap-up. And we just announced you in alphabetical order. I will continue to do it in alphabetical order. I may mix it up, so don't be alarmed. And 30 seconds, again, allow for your closing statement. And there will be no questions at this time from the audience unless I'm told otherwise. The person that's going to be with me is your timekeeper, Sarah Beth Kunkel. This is being streamed live and that is thanks to Mr. Jarvis Eskey. Are there any questions for us before we start? Okay.
Well, I do have one question.
Sir?
Can we speak to one another, which is question one another? Who is asking?
I will allow you to speak to one another, but if the speaking is disrespectful, I will graciously cut you off.
I actually don't have any questions, but it's something we come up with.
We will handle that as it becomes necessary. But thank you. I'll get the final okay from the organizers. But if you want to address a candidate, as long as we don't turn this into something that is, you know, we are in the house of the Lord, so we'll just be respectful of that. So, thank you, Mr. Huntley. Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. We are ready to start. Mr. Bryant will take over questioning and you will get some questions that are not on our list. First, how would you address books in the children and youth areas of the schools libraries and the public libraries that groom children for transgender, bestiality, and other forms of sexual matters? Do you consider this an issue for your school system? We're going to start in alphabetical order with Derek Phillips.
Alright. Sorry, can you repeat that question one more time?
Yes. How would you address the book situation? They're taking out books for various things in your schools and the public libraries and the school libraries that groom the children for things such as transgender, bestiality, other forms of sexual matters. Do you consider that an issue for the Birmingham City School Board? Or do you not? And if so, explain.
At the moment, obviously, it's a major issue within the schools. And I do want to make sure that I do state that in education, you do have to have age-appropriate material for students to be aware of and make sure that they are being guarded against things that will be adversely contributing to their character, adversely contributing to their understanding. And also in the same text as well when it comes to education, that they're going to be educated somewhere or another, whether that's in the world, whether that's in the church, whether that's in the school. Do we have people who are confident, competent enough to share at an appropriate venue those materials? Now, again, I think that you have to be, there has to be age-specific requirements. There has to be monitoring, clear monitoring of what's being presented. But no, at this moment, I don't see that as a major issue within our schools at this time.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Huntley.
Well, I agree with Mr. Phillips on this. I've been volunteering at Martha Gaskins for the last three years in the library. And I haven't seen any of those issues come in the library at the elementary school.
Address your audience.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Alright. So, the main point I'm making about this is those types of books, and I'm going to say all of those types of books dealing with gender and all these things, that's a parental issue, not a school issue. And I'm more in tune with having those types, if they are in the school system, which I haven't seen, not in our school system, that is a system where the parent needs to be introducing that to the child, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Yurani?
Thank you, Miss Smoot. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Miss Smoot. Mrs. Smoot.
Mrs. Smoot. I thought that was a trick question you put to a man like me.
I don't pose the questions.
When I was listening to the question, I said, she trying to bait me into something here. You know, I'm old-school. Those young people today, ladies and gentlemen, they are much more informed about sexuality and all of the trends and things and much more advanced than that when we were coming up. You all know about this. They're on their cell phones. They know more about it than we do. So, it's important that they are aware of these movements, but it cannot be a distraction when it comes to education and them developing marketable skills and academics. It cannot be a distraction. And that's all I'm going to say to that before you get me in trouble.
Thank you. We'll hear now from Joseph Bryant.
Good morning. Basic question. Tell us who you are and why do you want this position or why do you want the position again? A lot of money is invested, a lot of time is invested. Who are you and why do you want to do this?
We'll start, uh...
Mr. Phillips?
Okay. Again, my name is Derek Phillips. I am currently incumbent for the Birmingham City School Board, representing District Four. There's this scripture that says that you know a tree by the fruit it bears. And for more than 20 years, I have already worked with families, students across Birmingham and metropolitan area as well. I've invested considerable amount of time and interest to make sure our students have the guidance, have someone who is, by working in the schools, we started off in Birmingham City Schools. I'm sorry, let me go back just a second. I'm a graduate of Birmingham City School, Woodland High School. Always wanted to come back and reinvest in my community. Came, went to University of Alabama, went to also to graduate school for at Stanford University, Eastern School of Defense, and also University of Alabama at UAB with an education degree as well and leadership. So, I've invested, making sure I've been educated and demonstrating the level of education within not only the schools, but also in the community. I've worked also in public schools from Birmingham, Jefferson County, and Hoover School Systems at varying levels, within the classroom as a science teacher, as administrator as well, but also in nonprofit sectors as well, looking holistically at how to address the needs within our community. That includes around housing, make sure families are educated about those areas in regard to education, both with nonprofits and leading organizations to make sure that students are addressing the needs from a public sector, private sector, and so forth. And make sure families, we take a multi-generational approach when it comes to educating our community. I currently work as the Director of Education for Birmingham Promise.
Fifteen seconds.
Birmingham Promise, where I serve, again, Director of Education, excuse me, Director of K-12 Initiatives, providing student opportunity to have college and career access opportunities through free, last-dollar rate tuition assistance, but also increase the number of students who are in internship program as well.
Thank you.
So, my name is Rodney Huntley and I was raised in Birmingham. I've been living at the same address for 30 years. And I worked for the prison system for 27 years. And that's really where this comes from. When we got to the prison system, the first thing they made me do was a black-white count. Let me change that. On the board is a white-black count. And I would count something like 27 whites and 47 blacks, 50 whites and 75 blacks. And then, and one white guy saw me looking kind of strange and he said, yeah, it's more y'all in here than it is of us. It's more of y'all. And it made me want to make rank. So, I went from a correctional officer to a warden. But what I found out in all my making rank was I wasn't going to be able to fix that disparity in the prison system. And going back, 2013, I attended more school board meetings. I attended 80% of all school board meetings. I was on a commission with Virginia Volker and I was working on school-student retention. Then, on top of that, I ran for the school board. That's the one that Dajie Hendricks won. So, I was probably the most qualified. And I also attended the school board training session. I was probably one of the most qualified at the time.
Fifteen seconds.
The short answer is this. We're not going to be able to do anything for our kids if we don't make sure they get a great education. We've got to educate them in all those issues, school, life, and work. That's the short answer.
I was neglectful in my first statement because I did not give thanks to Almighty God, the Creator, the heavens and the earth, and everything in between, and Bishop Lowe for inviting us into this tremendous facility. The question was, why am I involved in this? I'm a retired supervisor for Chevron Petroleum Division. I could not help but notice when they brought in new engineers, they brought the top of the line from Harvard and Yale and Duke, LSU Engineering Department, Southern University, the local black HBCUs didn't have a shot. The only other black engineers they brought in was from Liberia and Nigeria, by no me. And I said, what about us? Why do we continue to have low expectations and standards for us when we turning our young people out? It's not just satisfied that, oh, they can read, can they read and do math competitively? That is the question. And I get compassion with these things because I'm looking in the inner cities. I'm originally from New Orleans. I've been here for nine years now. But I'm noticing all the inner cities, it's the same picture. The black and the brown are at the low social ladder of income, at the low social ladder of math and science and reading comprehension. And all of the inner cities, all this is happening under the leadership of people who look just like you and I, Miss Smoot. We're going to put an end to that, Brother Yusef. And don't mind me calling you that. His name is Joseph. The original name in your African language for Joseph is Yusef. It's the same name of the father of Jesus. Jesus said, the least of these, how can I be in retirement? I had a good round. I made a good...
Fifteen seconds.
Life for my children. My baby daughter is a doctor in California. I lived well. But how can I sit on my porch and watch what I'm seeing happening in the city year after year after year and it don't affect me personally? I'm going to give you a devoted life. If you vote for me, things will never be the same again. I guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next question. What are your plans to make sure all Birmingham schools especially and those underserved neighborhoods have equal access to resources? Resources like technology, resources for their academics, athletics, things that they... Counseling, non-traditional things that you're seeing now that you didn't see 30 years ago. What are your plans or your strategic plan to make sure these schools, especially in underserved neighborhoods, that the planned field is equal? I will start with you, Mr. Phillips.
We're talking about equity and inclusion here. And so, we're talking about where our schools are. It's incumbent upon us to be very aware of what resources and tools are existing within the various communities in which those schools are located. One of the things I've talked with these superintendent and the board about is that have we done a landscape analysis to see what resources, what tools, what entities are already existing in our community to see how we can build greater partnerships to build that equity? We have to look at what entities in regards to just not only those businesses, but also how the funding that we provide to every school. When we talk about one-to-one ratio for technology in our schools, when we talk about entities and organizations like EdFarm or Jones Valley, Teaching Farm, the things of those nature, how can we build at capacity and also make sure that they're being available to, not on the eastern side of town, but western side of town? And if they don't have capacity, do we identify those other individuals and organizations that have capacity to build and work with those schools as well? We're investing millions of dollars when it comes to making sure that we have high-quality, not only educational programming at all of our schools and have equal access to all the information and all the tools that every one of our schools should have as well. But even when we talk about the athletic program, we vote for male and female students, there is a lot that is being done and making sure that we address this. And conversation with our leaders, including the principals, including the staff, to make sure that what are those concerns are we are hearing.
Thirty seconds.
But also having these within the community to hear from our parents as far as what they believe are the needs within our individual schools and some of the things that can be addressed. So, we've been very intentional about getting communication out, having those surveys completed by families and within our, with our teachers and also with our staff to make sure that whatever those needs may be, we are addressing them adequately.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Judging from the Alabama Department of Education report card, Birmingham City School students, majority of them are classified as poor and disadvantaged. That's how you get the Title I money. So, if they're poor and disadvantaged, that mean they came from poor and disadvantaged homes. And their homes are poor and disadvantaged because their parents are unskilled and trying to make it from week to week, some of them, working two jobs. How do we change that dynamic? And I'm a corporate man. No corporate funding will go to a program. I cannot give you millions of dollars every year in the name of poor and disadvantaged children under Title I and year after year after year, that number don't decline. Who would do that? They talk about this guy Elon Musk, or Musk, whatever his name. He's not a politician. He's a corporate man. Corporations don't run like political people. They get results. I worked with engineers all my life. Engineering does not tolerate repetitive failure. The poor and disadvantaged number, that number's not decreasing, we call a timeout. Let's reevaluate that, people. Let's make it happen. Let's give the services to the families. If the families are poor and disadvantaged, they need services.
Thirty seconds.
They need monitoring. They need resources. People would understand. And they also need, we expect certain accountability from you, mom and dad. Am I out of time?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. In my last 15 seconds, I'm going to say this. Nothing could be more important than education for is the advancement of your society. When educators come up here, we talk about Board of Education, you give them more time.
Time.
Thank you.
Don't start my time until the clapping stops.
The clapping has started.
So, let me say this. And I have to agree with Brother Yurani on the fact that you can't keep doing the same old thing, getting the same old stuff.
That's right.
Because that's the, that's just the epitome of stupidity. You're not, you're not doing smart things. But the first thing I would do, and I don't have a plan, so I'm not going to even lie. I don't have a plan. But the first thing I would do is talk to the principals. I think I have five principals in my district, District Four. What's going on at your school? What's your biggest issue at your school? How are the students at your school? How are the parents at your school? Then, I would try to get with the PTA. What do you see going on with your school? What do you have going on with your school? And of course, to be honest, I'm going to have to watch the students. I'm not going to talk to the students, not the young ones, but I'm going to watch the students and see what's going on with them. And finally, finally, I'm going to talk to our graduating classes. How do you see your life unfolding in front of you now?
That's right.
What do you see yourself able to do? Have we given you the heart and the mind and the soul to want to go out and achieve great things? Because if we haven't done that by graduation, we haven't done our job. The main thing we want to do is say, when you graduate school, you can go out and do a job. Or you can go to trade school. Or you can go to college. That's how it was when I came out of school. You either went to trade school, you went to college, or you went to the military.
That's right.
And you had something that you were going to go do. And that's where we need to get our students now. No students to be graduating from high school and not have a plan to go do something and make their life better. And that's what I'm saying. I don't have a strategic plan right this second, but I promise you I will have one.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley.
I'm sorry, can we make another statement?
I'll let you rebuttal. Go ahead. You got 15 seconds on your rebuttal.
Just wanted to say again, we've talked about the preparedness of students. It has to begin earlier in their academic career, looking at earlier development pathways, identifying skill sets, but also making sure that students have the literacy component and also those numeracy skills that are in place. So, the rigor, the rigor in our classrooms is essential, but also informing parents of the need to be a collaborator, collaborator with those students' development as well. There has to be greater bridging. There has to be greater collaboration. There has to be greater conversation in order to raise a child. And so, it has to be a village approach.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, thank you. Start off with Mr. Phillips. You know, illiteracy is a problem with all school systems, particularly it affects our school system. There are some students that have been socially promoted who effectively are grade levels behind, who continue to pass on in their school system. I know it's a shared responsibility between these students and teachers, but how do we, and parents, how do we address the issue of illiteracy in students that are being passed on when they're not prepared? They're of age, but not prepared.
Yeah. I think what you have to have is greater accountability and make sure that the standard remains the standard, whatever that, whatever that standard may be. I know that I've seen that we talk about social promotion, how it can be adversely impactful to our students, but also to our community at large. When I was in educator, in the classroom, I did have an issue with social promotion. I can remember vividly being in 2005 when I first came into the school system and having...
Could you explain social promotion while you were addressing that?
Social promotion, it looks at, it looks at allowing a student to still move forward even though they don't demonstrate that they're passing the classroom work. That may be for various reasons, whether that be with external factors that are contributing to their being able to complete assignments, whether that be a lack of a great deal of apathy that they may have as well in regards to the classroom. And maybe it be just, even when you talk about the fact that sometimes that the fear that students stigmatize that by being retained and how that can be impactful to the child as well. So, those things have to be taken into consideration or have been taken into consideration. But at the same time, you have to hold students accountable, teachers accountable, staff accountable, to make sure the student have the skills and the knowledge and understanding that they're supposed to acquire at the grade level and force. As I said again, when I was an initial teacher, one of the things I have, I had a student population now working with, for my classes, about 130 or so students. There were 12 students at the end of that semester that were failing or at the end of that school year that were failing. I had a principal came in to me at that time and was like, you're going to pass these kids. And I said, you're going to do some work to help the kids.
Thirty seconds.
I did do tutoring and other things of that nature. And at the end, I saw that about five did not complete it. And so, there's a lot of pressure that I put on teachers, go ahead and pass students even though they're not prepared.
Fifteen seconds.
And what happened, the principal came back to me and said that because you didn't pass them, I'm not going to renew you. That was a problem. And I said, we can't have that going on. There has to be a standard that if you're not doing or don't have the skill set, we need to make, put in place the parameters, the tools and resources for those students to get what they need. And if not, they can't just continue to be passed on because it hurts the standard overall. That's right.
We're talking about literacy. They passed the Alabama Literacy Act in 2019. The governor didn't put it into effect until year 2023, 24, 24, 25.
It was 23, 24.
23, 24. Thank you, Mr. Huntley. But between 19 and 23, 19, 20, 21, 22, that's almost four years. What did we do during that time? We're doing just like my brother said, we were just shoveling them through, shoveling them from third grade to fourth grade, knowing those children could not read at a fourth grade level. We knew it. We doing, we still doing it today. We're letting them graduate not reading at the level where they can be competitive. I don't have to tell you we're gonna stop. That should never have existed, we. Now, the people who come to these forums on a Saturday morning, W E B DuBois declined, described you as our talented tenth. Average people, especially in the black community, ain't coming to this and no Saturday morning. You are our talented tenth, and I'm telling you right now, I'm gonna stand up like a man and make sure that we have the quality of, of educational compliance. Win, lose, or draw, but you must know the truth. Like this gentleman is saying, there should be a report. These are many students went on and these are many that went on even though they did not meet minimal requirements.
Thirty seconds.
The public should know that, so you can act intelligently. I'm gonna stand up like a man for all those little children who have no one to stand with them for first grade. We're gonna make sure their first grade compliance. We're gonna make sure their first grade compliance, 'cause we're gonna make sure all the parents get them in the preschool. And we're gonna back them up because they need backup. From what I understand, if you, if you live, if you live two miles from the school, the system don't, don't serve you with transportation. How could you be none and disadvantaged until you gotta get there the best way you can? I'm gonna stand up like a man for all the women that don't know what a real man look like.
Time.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Huntley?
Mr. Huntley? So, 2019, they passed the bill, the Reading Initiative Bill. And if you were in the third grade and did not read on third grade level, you would be held back. That was the plan that was supposed to go into effect in 2020. What happened in 2020? COVID. COVID hit. COVID hit hard and it hit me. And we, we had, we went to what we call video schooling. I'm, I'm, it doesn't hit my mind, but it was, they didn't go to school. They, they were schooled at home. And, and, and I'm gonna give credit to somebody. Roger Smithman stood up in the legislature over and over again and said, hey, we, we can't put this thing into effect until we give the kids at least a whole year at school. So therefore, we did not start until 22, 23. Meanwhile, I'm gonna give credit to our current mayor. He started a program called Pays Pals. And I was a volunteer for Pays Pals for the last three years. When I went in, we had an opportunity to, now I didn't teach children how to read. My job was to encourage children to read. I let them read to me in the library, that's why I was in the library. I let them read to me in the library, and then I would tell them what they were doing wrong. Then I would encourage them, hey, read to your dog, read to your cat, read to your little brother, read to your mama while she's cooking, but read at least twenty minutes a day.
Thirty seconds.
Short answer. We were passing kids. By law, we're not allowed to do it anymore. You either make it by the third grade or you don't. And the same thing with the math initiative when it comes to the effect. You either make it or you don't. And so that's where we are right now. Our job now is to make sure that as many children as possible can make it by the third grade.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna continue to ask Mr. Bryant to ask you questions that come to the top of his head. So we've got a couple more questions, and I'm gonna take one question for the audience. Mr. Bryant, continue on.
I have one more on my mind here, okay. Well, this is a question I'm gonna go ahead and ask on behalf of Bishop Lo and the pastoral organization, the Gatekeepers Association. We're all in a church, a house of worship. What are, speak on your spiritual beliefs or how does, how do your spiritual beliefs or your moral compass, how does that guide you in your leadership as you seek this position?
Mr. Huntley?
I'll start with you, Mr. Huntley. How, how do your spiritual beliefs and your moral compass guide you as you seek to lead the school system?
Well, I believe in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and that He died for us, but that, that He came, He died for us, but not that He died, but that He rose again with all power in His hand. He died as a sacrifice. And I believe that, my dad's a preacher. We've been taught that since early childhood, but it, it became real to me after college. Now, let's move on to that. You, when you have Jesus, that's the old saying, when you got Jesus, you can't help but to wanna help somebody, anywhere, anytime, anyplace. The only thing that keeps you from doing that is the fact that some people are not people that are truthful and honest. And you worry about who's being truthful and honest and who's not. But my, my main concern has always been to help somebody if I can. And, and, you know, you don't go to church, you serve that church. If you're not serving that church, you're there for the wrong reason. So, my job is to serve, and I wanna serve this community. My job and my concern as a Christian is to help someone and to lead them to Jesus Christ. Now, in the school system, you do that by example. Not by, you know, getting somebody, you're gonna be a Christian before the day is out. But you do that by example. And you will know that you're doing it when people call you to account, when things are not doing what they are supposed to do. I'm gonna tell this quick story. I was working in segregation at St. Clair. And I guess me and my, and I'm gonna have to say my ex-wife, but me and my ex-wife probably had had a fight or something, but whatever the reason was, I went to SIG and I started cussing. I cussed up one aisle and down the other. And an inmate in SIG said, Mr. Huntley, you can't be doing that, you're a Christian. I had never told them that I was a Christian.
Fifteen.
But the point is that they knew by my actions who and what I served. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, same question.
Say that question one more time for me, please.
How does your spiritual and your moral beliefs guide you as you seek to lead the school system, or as you continue to lead the school system?
For me, and I mentioned before, I, I've said faith is at the heart of everything I do. I said again at the beginning here that you know a tree by the fruit it bears. I think if you look at the work that I've done, the relationships I've built, the actions and the conversations that I have, that has been demonstrated time and time again. I think when you talk about this thing, when you talk about scriptures about, there's this great wall of hostility. And that those walls and barriers that we see can be bridged when you have the right people in place who know how to be bridge builders, to be an ambassador who represents well, not only in their words, but in their actions and how they engage on the day-to-day, whether it's from the little, smallest of children to the greatest of adults, whatever that may be. But also having a transformational mindset and an incarnational approach. I moved back to Birmingham and back into Woodlawn specifically for the fact that I, the example that was set forth by Jesus, that He came from the heavenly to the natural, He came from the glories to a gutter of place called earth, and taking that approach and moving back into the community to be an example before those young people, before those families, and a reflection of what a godly light looks like. And in being conversation with those children on your front porch and in your home and going door to door to be able to speak, just like Jesus did, to walk amongst, to dwell amongst, to demonstrate. And that's what continues to guide me.
Thirty seconds.
And how I converse with, how I live, how I speak to, and how I'm reflecting that example that was set forth for me.
Thank you, sir. Same thing, Brother Yarami.
Testy, thank you for your question. From sixteen years old, I was raised under the manhood development training in the Nation of Islam under Minister Faqar Khan. And He told me, when you're of age, you make sure you join on with the Christian movement that stands for the same principles that end the principles of Islam. That's why I'm also a member of the Movement Fellowship Church of Mighty Dr. Erskine. That's my main man. And I'm a member of Mohammed Masl, number sixty-nine. I don't separate myself from my Christian family, 'cause there's no difference between a true Muslim and a true Christian. And lastly, I'm gonna say this, I don't play with Jesus. He said, and we all say, all things are possible through Christ Jesus whom I serve, but when it comes to this system that's oppressing us, we, we throwing our hands up. So somewhere we got, I don't play with Jesus. He said, He never said worship me. Jesus said, you follow Me. And if there's a need, you champion that need. It don't make no difference what the opposition is, I will be there with you. And I believe in that. You won't see me hooping and holling and singing in the choir on Sunday, but on the battlefield, you see Brother Walter standing up for those who can't speak for themselves. Is that clear enough? Thank you for your question.
I have a question for all of you, and we're, you know, there's a lot of engagement with each other. How do you plan to engage these parents? Many times, elected officials get the office, say a bunch of great stuff with the great people here, and then you call them, you can't find them. You call them, they won't pick up. They, you scared to come to a forum, you scared to be seen, you're, you're doing social media and only because you can control it. But parents, taxpayers, control it. I wanna ask you, what is your plan to stay engaged with the educational community, i.e. parents, i.e. pastors, i.e. people? Let's start with you, Mr. Yarami.
Testy, thanks for your question. We intend to have this hotline where any parent, teacher, or administrator can call the District One directly, and we respond. I don't know if the school board, Board of Education in the district, do they have funding? Is there a discretionary budget for the school board members? My brother?
Discretionary funding, I'm sorry.
Discretionary funding for your school board position?
Not discretionary funding, no.
No, there is no budget. Do you get a stipend for your services to serve?
Yes, you get a stipend, yes.
Okay. We're gonna set up a hotline, and we will answer your call. You can take my number right now, I've dedicated my life to this, where you will get an answer and you will get action for whatever the issues are. And I told, and I'm gonna say it again, we're gonna stand up like grown men for all of our women out there who have a problem with the teenage boys that you can't do nothing with. We're gonna stand up like a man. There are men in my circles, there are a couple of them, a couple of them here tonight that approached them young boys, not with a badge and a gun, but with love and concern. And the real men that's sitting out here, you know from example, when you pull them young boys to the side and you look them in the eyes and you talk to them man to man, they come all the way down, they don't give you no trouble. You all know what I'm talking about. We're gonna stand up like a man for all of the women who don't know what a real man look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley.
I'm gonna stand up for this one because I wanted to show my card. And I told you all, I've been living in the same house for the last thirty years. During that time period, I worked for William Parker, I was one of his council assistants. My main job was going out to the neighborhoods and talking to people. What number did I give them? The number that's on this card, my home phone number. When they had a problem, they called me at home. They called me at home, and I made sure, I made sure I wrote the problem down, and I took it before the council. And I'm telling you, that's the same thing that I'm gonna do today. You invite me to be your school board representative, you're not gonna get a, a special cell phone number, you get my home number. I'm gonna report to you because you elected me. You won't have to hunt for Rodney Huntley. That won't happen. And not only that, I'm gonna make sure I attend your school, your neighborhood association meetings. I can't attend them every month, but I should be able to attend them four months, four times out of the year. And I'll be there to talk to you about what's going on with the school board, what we need help with, and I want to be encouraging parents to come talk to your teachers and your principals, 'cause they're there for you. They serve you. And they serve your children. So, that's my short answer. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes, when it comes, when it comes to parental involvement or engagement, or family engagement, I'm gonna do what I continue to do. I'll be accessible, be amenable, and available to families to call me anytime they want, which they have done, whether it was issues at Woodlawn High School for graduation requirements, valedictorians, whether it was a issue between a, a, a teacher and a student at, at Norwood, whether it was an issue with the principal leadership at Smith School, wherever it may be, and whether there were events going on within those schools. And I'm, I'm there, doing the work day in and day out, but also maintaining, again, a full-time positions, working with, in conjunction with our school to make sure families are aware of what's available, what's accessible to them. I give them not only my personal information, but also email addresses, and try to return those phone calls within a timely fashion. Generally, I give, I have a requirement of about twenty-four hours, you will hear back from me if I'm not out of town or I'm not somewhere else. And they get those responses. And you can speak to those individuals who will tell you that Mr. Phillips is available. If you call him, we send out newsletters each month as well to make sure that, not only to our neighborhood association, but also to our leaders and our, 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 our church leaders as well, from across east side to west side, to make sure they're aware what's going on, that if I can't be at any neighborhood meeting, that you can at least share this information to know, and that they can reach out to me at any time and be, and receive a response, just like I'm here today. To make sure that you're aware, that you see that, I, I'm not afraid to be in the public, I'm not afraid to answer any questions, I have no issue with that. And if I don't know something, I'm not afraid to say I don't know, but I will find out answers, and I will work on the behalf to make sure to resolve the issues that we may have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have one question from the audience, and that will be handled. Bishop Lo, will you approach? With the Gatekeepers Association.
Are you holding for me? So, my question is from Mr. Phillips. You mentioned earlier when they talked about the books and sexuality and the school system and things of that nature, and you mentioned you don't see that as a problem in, in our school system. My question is, with that being such a, a problem in our society, how, what is the problem in our school systems if you don't see that to be the problem?
You said, what is the problem?
What would be our problem? What would be something, would be an issue other than that?
Okay. I'll say that, over the past four years, we've seen increasing growth, great gains are going on and things of that, but in that same time, we know there are still a lot that needs to be done. We know that when it comes to proficiency levels amongst our students, when it comes to reading and math and numeracy, there's still, there's a considerable number that still need to be strengthened in those areas. When you talk about students who are, the college going rate and also job readiness rate, when students going to graduate, where are they going after graduation? We still have roughly a fifty percent, almost fifty percent student go on to college. But even those who go on to college, what are we doing to address those who have a required remediation? Why is that? That means we gotta talk about the level of rigor that's going in the classroom before they even get to college and preparedness there. But even when we talk about the other fifty percent of students who don't go directly to, to, to the college, their job going rate, where are they going? What skills are they lacking? What tools that they need to have in place to be addressed at the same time? So those are some areas I think that we still need to continue to work on in that regards. We are seeing an increase as far as satisfaction amongst not only staff, but also leadership as well, because in, in twenty years, we had almost ninety different superintendents, we have consistency of leadership now. So the visions are being set and they're being maintained. We also have a lack of, of discontinuity between leadership of the school board and also within our superintendent. So the communication, collaboration are being evident now. We're seeing increases, I'm sorry, there's a lot more.
Go ahead, yeah, there's a lot more.
There's a lot, but, but I think those things we have to look at, putting emphasis on career readiness with CTE programming and so forth, what that looks like.
Time.
And I'll stop there.
All right. Mr. Huntley, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds to talk about that, and Mr. Yamani, you too, because I think that would be fair. Since this is a current school board member, I wanna know how you wanna address that question.
I'm gonna try to address the question that I think you asked, you asked about the situation with homosexuality and all this stuff. And I'm gonna answer you truthfully, so you can judge me just like you want to. When I went to the prison system, I'm gonna say I was homophobic, okay? I'm gonna use that term, I was homophobic. I was raised in a Baptist family, you know, homosexuality was a, a big issue, you, you either straight or you gay. But when I went to prison, I found out that, and a, and a guy told me, he said, Mr. Huntley, and I'm gonna give you the story behind it quickly. One night, some inmates were chasing some sissies, and I told them to stop chasing those sissies. And that man walked up to me and he said, Mr. Huntley, we gonna be in prison for a long time, these are women. And I'm like, ugh, something I had to get over. But what I did learn was to judge a person not by his sexuality.
Fifteen seconds.
Judge a person not by his sexuality, but by his, his, what he is. Is he a truthful and honest person? Will he do what he's supposed to do? Is he a troublemaker? That's what I judge. Now...
Time. Mr. Yamani?
Testy, right briefly, I'm gonna answer my brother, as I said earlier, we have too many large problems. We can't allow that to be a distraction.
We can't allow that to be a distraction. But real briefly, as people of African descent, which I see most of us are, we studied the language of the nations where we were taken from. Do you know in those West African nations, there was not even a word for prison? Cuz there weren't any. There was not even a word for homosexuality. There, what the heck you were talking about? This is culture that's been forced upon us.
Fifteen seconds.
Stay in your natural stance, don't let it become an issue. We have too many other pressing issues to deal with. Don't let it become a distraction by this world. Jesus wasn't not approved with this world. And if you're standing with him, you don't let this world distract you from the mission.
Time.
Thank you.
All right, guys, we're gonna thank you very much. We're gonna let you take 30 seconds to tell us your parting shot. And we're gonna start with you, Mr. Huntley, and then you, Mr. Phillips, and then you, Mr. Yarani. Your parting shot, why are, why, why, why should these voters pick you?
Well, let me ask you this, Ms. Moon.
Don't ask me, you are here, I'm just your moderator.
I understand, I understand.
I'm not gonna answer you, please respect the audience, I am just the messenger.
Well, if you-
I'm not gonna let you shoot me or kill me up here.
If you, if you'll listen to me for one second.
I'm gonna listen to you as an audience member, but a non-voter in this district.
You told us we were gonna have 30 seconds at the beginning to introduce ourselves, which we didn't get.
Okay, well, I'll add 30 seconds before you go.
Thank you.
I'm a conflict resolution specialist, and a mediator, a lawyer, and a bunch of others, and a former county commissioner who dealt with a very contentious group. I do yield that 30 seconds to you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. So the the main reason I wanted to get that was, I wanted to introduce myself. Lifelong member of Baptist Church, lived in Birmingham all my life. 27 years with the Department of Corrections, started as a correctional officer, and then retired as a warden too. Also, I went to Faulkland University and have a, you know, degree in human resources and a master's degree in management. But that's not it. The main thing is I've been working in my community for the last 30 years. I've worked to make my community better.
Thirty seconds.
And all the times I've done that, yes, ma'am, thank you. And all the times that I've done that, I made sure that my neighbors knew who I was and that I was working for them. If you go to my community, or talk to my community, Neighborhood Association president, or anyone in my community, they know who I am, they know what I do. And I'm saying the same thing. When I volunteered with Virginia Volker-
Five seconds.
Yes, ma'am. I did it because I wanted to be a benefit to my neighborhood, and that's what I wanna do. I wanna serve you and be a benefit to you in the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. Mr. Phillips?
Yes, ma'am. Again, Derek Phillips, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think that I would ask for you to reconsider me again for the school board, but I think, again, the proof is being shown, the things are moving in the right direction. When we talk about so many things that have happened that are unprecedented, for the first time, we're seeing student enrollment in the city of Birmingham City Schools increase, something we hadn't seen, where we're seeing over 500 to 2,000 leave every year. When we talk about the expansion of pre-K programming, we have a new school, a new program that's coming over to Martha Gaskin that will have seven new pre-K pro classes, five new kindergarten, and five first grade classes. When we talk about the expansion of program for early college-
Thirty seconds.
Allowing students to get a associate degree before they graduate and go on to college and be able to graduate college early. We talk about the fact that when you look at the the number of interest from CNN and from national recognition of our reading and literacy score that have increased as well. When we talk about the fact that we have more students who are looking at going on to college than before, when we talk about persistence rates, we're seeing higher increases there as well. We talk about satisfaction rate among staff, oh, nearly 80% of the students in the school district is moving in the right direction, and the level of collaboration and continuity of leadership is still moving in the right direction. I think that we're showing that things are moving in the right direction, but there's still a lot that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Testy, when you open up the Birmingham City Schools website, the first picture you see is Mr. Sullivan and a statement from the superintendent. Now, I miss Mr. Sullivan, I think he's a decent person, but you didn't elect him. You elected the school board members. When do you see them all together saying, ladies and gentlemen of Birmingham, these are the policies that we have installed, these are the programs, A, B, C, and D, and Mr. Sullivan needs to agree with them or else?
Thirty seconds.
You didn't elect him, you elected the school board representative. Dr. Carter G. Wilson said, you cannot have social change without strong ordinances and laws to back up the programs that you wanna institute. In every school, there's a parent-school policy or agreement, or Brother Goldsmith told me a pact. And when I look at them-